To working families each and every day who have to spend sometimes an hour or more in traffic to get to work and then to rush home at the end of the day. And if you have school-aged children, you've got to get homework done, you've got to get them fed, and then you've got to get them to bed so you can then start all over the next day. And we need to do something about it. And so I'm part of a group called the Atlanta Regional Commission. And Atlanta Regional Commission is made up of the elected county chairs and mayors throughout the metro area. And we began to talk to federal officials, and we began to talk to them collectively because they said to us two things. Number one, Atlanta, we don't have as much money because of federal budget cuts as we used to have to help the local government. Sometimes people say to me, "Why doesn't government do as much as it used to?" And the answer to that is that 25 years ago, we got a lot more federal funding than we get today. There's something called community development block grants. We're fighting. We fought two presidential administrations. We're fighting right now to make sure that community development block grant funding, for example, is not cut. But there's not as much federal funding as there used to be. So what they said to us, "You can no longer come and have DeKalb County compete against the city of Atlanta, or Gwinnett County, or Fulton, or Clayton, or Cobb. You're going to have to come as a collective unit and make an appeal if you want to get those highly sought-after and competitive federal funds." That's number one. And number two, you're going to have to come with some money in hand. Because the only people getting those awards are people who come collaboratively to the federal government and who come with a down payment. If you come with zero, you get zero in this environment. And so we've gotten our act together because we've gotten enabling legislation from the state, the metro region, 10 counties, 21 elected officials from those 10 counties came together unanimously agreed on a project list. Now, when we first got together, we had Ted, about $22 billion of warrants on our list, but only $6 billion of money, region money, and another $1.1, $1.2 billion that'll go to the local governments. But we had $6.14 billion to spend. So we had to cut that $22 billion list down to $6.14 billion. And not only were we able to do that, nobody got everything they want. And let's be clear about that. Nobody got everything they want because we had to cut it down. But DeKalb County is getting 20% of that $6.14 billion. And some people have said DeKalb County is getting too much. I think that's appropriate because DeKalb County has invested in MARTA for 40 years, and we've been paying the MARTA tax along with Fulton and the city of Atlanta. So the benefit to DeKalb County, people have said, "Well, why should DeKalb County support this transportation tax?" I'll tell you why. Number one, because we have a traffic congestion problem, and we've got to do something about it. Number two, because 20% of those projects are coming to DeKalb County. Let me put it another way. DeKalb County is going to generate $800 million of revenue from the penny over 10 years and get $1.3 billion back in return. That is $1.60 for every dollar we put in. And that's a significant return on investment. You give me any investment where I can put in a dollar and get $1.60 back. That's almost two for one. That is significant. Some people have said, "Well, I'm not getting everything I want." And of course, I'm aware that we're getting two of the top four largest rail projects in the region. The number-one rail project is in the Clifton Corridor, which will connect in the Emory University area. The number-two project is the Belt Line. The number-three project is what we call the Northwest Line to go up into Cobb County. And the number-four project is the East Line going into South DeKalb County. And I realize that there are some who said South DeKalb County is not getting enough. South DeKalb County is getting almost a quarter of a billion dollars. Now, I was just up in Washington, meeting with the DOT and the Federal Transit Administration, top officials, along with Congressman Hank Johnson. I can take a quarter of a billion dollars and then make a case to the federal government. They've told me, "You bring 50% to the table, we can get you 50 more percent." And not only from the federal government, from the bonding capacity that MARTA has and from the local, DeKalb County's local government match, we can build rail in South DeKalb County. It's a down payment to getting us to rail. If the referendum fails, the down payment will be, and that's what we will get, from the feds and from every other source. So I think the case for passing the referendum is very compelling because, let me make, put it to you one other way. I may want to live in a half a million-dollar house, but I may only be able to afford a $200,000 house. Now, I know there are some people who say, "I'm not getting everything I want. I want the $500,000 house. I can afford a $200,000 house." I could say, "I can't live in the house I want, therefore, I'm going to live on the street, homeless." Or I could go ahead and buy the $200,000 house, build equity in it over the next 10 years so that I can get myself to the $500,000 house I ultimately want to live in. And that's just a number I plucked out of my head, but you could use whatever numbers you wanted to, obviously. It's a down payment on not only our present, but our future. Good article written in Saturday's paper, I'm not sure who wrote the op-ed piece, but in the editorial section of the paper, it said that local governments may have actually cut too much, and that's why the economy is having a slow recovery. Now, we've cut 24% of our budget into DeKalb County. But if we're going to continue to provide for the future, this future has always been built on infrastructure investments, investments in education, and I would add one more that the article didn't talk about, and that's technology. If we don't start to invest in our infrastructure now, we are already seeing the beginnings of a crumbling infrastructure throughout our nation, and that's what the next generation will inherit. So those are my reasons for supporting that referendum. Thank you for that question, Bert. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am? Yes?
Good evening. A lot of the changes that we want for the animal control, it's going to take money, a lot of money. Everything runs on money. And DeKalb, right now, has a revenue source to pay for these that they're not tapping into, and that is the rabies animal registration they were talking about earlier. And remember, they mentioned only about 1% of that registration fee is collected. That's probably from the dog owners that are sitting right here in this room. So for the other 99%, why doesn't it get collected? Well, there's no consequence. When you get the postcard in the mail, you know, you just paid $16 if you're good to get your annual rabies vaccine, so you're not going to pay another registration fee. You know, just throw it away. There's no consequence if you don't pay it. And that's revenue that's not being collected because there's no enforcement, there's no way to track it. So here's how you can get that money. You can get an outside company, give them the names of the people who have dogs, and you have lists of who's gotten rabies vaccinations in the past, maybe go back five years. You give that company those names and addresses, and they mail out a letter that says, "Oh, your registration's due," or "Your registration is overdue." And you make a late fee. You make a consequence for not paying that registration. DeKalb is the third-largest county in Georgia, and there are over 400,000 dogs. And if the registration fee, what is it, about $10 a dog? $5 to $15 is the regi-
Five for spade, 10 for unspade.
Okay, so it runs $5, $10, or $15. Let's say it's $10, just throw it right in the middle. If 400,000 dogs, if they really, if those owners really paid their registration fee, that's $4 million.
And cats.
Okay, there's some money to do these changes.
Rabies tax that will relate to the shelter. $80,000.
$80,000.
Right.
Okay, so that's a start. And so what happens is you don't pay this company to do it. No, no, no. After they collect the money, because they're sending out the letters, okay, they pay the postage, they pay the paper and the ink, okay, then you give them a percentage of what they collected. So you get them to do the labor for you.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent thought and idea, and I'm going to ask that, I don't know whether that's a part of that report from the task force or not, but let us take a look at that and see how that might work. That's similar to what we've done. We had a back collections problem when I became CEO in Recorder's Court. And we began with an amnesty program, and then we utilized a collection company-
Right.
-that basically took a percentage of what they collected-
Exactly.
-and we began to reverse that trend, and we've had some considerable success. In fact, when we sat down with our Recorder's Court judge last year and said, "Okay, here's where we are with our budget, and here's our revenue," she said, "I think I can help you with that revenue. I can generate X amount more dollars than what you've seen in this-"
Exactly.
"-from this court in the past." And then she went about doing it. And so I think I'm going to ask you all to take a look at that and then tell me, "If I can generate $4 million a year, I want to do it. I need it."
Because that doesn't use the resources, it doesn't use our money, it just brings it in.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Even if, you know, if we paid them a fee and get 3.5 of that $4 million, then we're ahead of the game. Yes, ma'am, in the back, you've been very patient. I tell you, I would come to you-
No problem. Recently, my daughter had a report to do, and we went searching for books. And most of the books were in libraries that, on weekends, they were closed, and particularly Scott Candler. And I know Scott, they're building a new Candler library. And I know we have budget restrictions, but I wanted to find out what is the plan for that library, and also a general explanation of why in certain neighborhoods, those libraries are closed on the weekends. Because even when I finally was able to get to those libraries, there were people in there using those resources. And if we are trying to put our efforts into education, that, I mean, I understand the pet issue, things like that, but we need to be putting our money into resources where our kids can thrive in this county and put back into this county.
And I agree with you 100%. That wins that library. It's virtually completed. Is May?
Yeah, the Candler library, the building's essentially done. They still need to run the fiber optics to the computer system, and then they've got to get all the furniture in there. But within a couple of months, it should be complete and ready to open. And you've touched on what's the dilemma for the library board, which is that when the bond was sold in 2005 and the expansion program started, the economy was still pretty good. Then, 2008, '09, '10, '11, their operating budget's been cut several million dollars. And so the library board decided they would try to keep most of their buildings open, even the new ones, but they would have to cut some hours of operation in order to do it. And so they monitor very closely from their databases all the usage of each branch, and when they have to revisit their hours of operation, they'll try to keep the hours open where the busiest traffic is. But it's been a dilemma they've had to deal with in this budget crisis.
Yeah, and I just want to add to that. It's been across the county. I mean, we, because of the referendum that was passed by the citizens, and understand, we have a separate library board. The county government funds the libraries, and then the library board and their staff make decisions about, you know, the priorities and which libraries stay open. But pretty much, I believe they've cut the hours in all the libraries except for DeKalb because that's the central one. So you could go to one, the decision was made because of a real revenue problem. Now, because of, you know, some adjustments we've had to make in our revenue, we've been able to keep all the libraries open. We've built eight new, seven new libraries. The eighth one will be on Candler Road. And I just want to point out, some communities got whole new libraries. Tucker Library's a whole new library, but so is, Stonecrest is a whole new library, which is in South DeKalb. Candler Road is getting that new library in South DeKalb. We did the Salem, I know that's not a, South Harrison was refurbished, that's Salem? Salem Panola was refurbished. There's a list in that book that we've handed out tonight, but if you look, you'll see library, I've visited virtually every, because I've either been to a ribbon-cutting, or I just wanted to go see how they were operating. So sometimes I just drop in. In fact, I drop in at virtually every county facility from time to time. I was at one of our golf courses this week, last, where's Wortham? When did we go to the golf course? Weren't you with me? Last Wednesday. And I just walked in the clubhouse just to see how the guys were doing, and they said, "Hey, man, we were just talking about you. What are you doing here?" And I was, I go to the libraries and I do the same thing, and I go to the rec centers to see how they're operating. By the way, we've got a new YMCA about to open on, in Stone Mountain. I think we're doing a pretty good job, and this is why. Because wherever I go in the county, they think somebody, some other section of the county is getting more resources. So we're doing either a good job or, you know, we're bouncing it out. But my point is, I think the library board, who made the decisions that were voted on by the citizens, has pretty much selected libraries. And so we have improved libraries all over the county now, and it's a good look for the county. It really is. That new library, I think, is scheduled to open in May, though, to answer your question. I'll be there for the opening.
Well, it still has the same outage. I mean, because if you have a beautiful library and you're not-
You know, Stonecrest sat closed for a year because the staffing wasn't there. I'm not certain what the hours will be. I can get you those hours because I don't want to give you wrong information, but a lot of that depends on what happens with this recession. You know, what I was, my goal in moving these projects forward is, if we sit on this money that was passed, some people say, "If we're in a recession, why are we building?" But part of the reason that we built libraries and we built rec centers and a YMCA and park improvements and some of our street escape improvements on Buford Highway and Memorial Drive and Candler Road, for example, are because those monies were passed with, from designated funds that can't be used for anything else. And if we don't do it, the costs continue to rise, and we won't be able to build a quality facility. So we've had to make this decision to go ahead and get facilities built while we can do it cheaper than what it'll cost later on. Go ahead and put people to work because every time we do a capital project, we're hiring people to go to work, and that's good for our economy, even if we can't staff them immediately. And so, but it's my understanding that that library is going to open in May, and if somebody will get her information, we'll tell you what the hours are going to be. Okay? All right. Okay, you've got five questions over here. I'm going to move around, back and forth. Okay? Yes, ma'am? No?
Yes, sir.
Back here. I'll get you. I know you've been patient, too. I'll get to you.
Returning to the recycling situation.
Yes.
If you intend to do marketing to increase the involvement, you really are going to have to make certain that you have the capacity to handle the increase. In my community paper, there was an article last year or so about the need for more people to recycle. And I, like the other person who spoke earlier, have been a part of the recycling program probably three years. But I've also had to make three or four phone calls, send an email, because, as she reported, no one was responsibly picking up the recycled materials. And I see this as a problem. I've talked about it with some of my sorority chapter members. This is a common problem. I happen to be the only person on my street who's recycling. But as I pointed out in my emailing and my phone calls, if my neighbors see that sitting there, what would be the incentive to pay the $30 for the bags and the carrier to put the paper in? Who's going to do that? So if, in fact, you want to increase the involvement, then there are some details, there's some infrastructure, as it is, that is going to need to be addressed in order to make it be effective and to encourage more people to participate.
Okay, and again, I apologize. I want to get your address as well. Ted, if you could send some, I'm not asking you to bounce all over the place, but I think he's coming back there. That's our top infrastructure guy, and Claudette is getting your information so we can find out why they're not picking up. Now, what's your sorority?
That would be Alphacap Al.
All right, well, my wife has a vested interest in making sure I serve you. Okay, all right. Ma'am, I promised you the next question. Yes.
So what I'm hearing is that we have almost 10 state-of-the-art libraries in our county. We have a brand-new YMCA. We have up, we have state-of-the-art parks and recreation. We have found money to allot to all these other priorities. You're clearly very passionate about transportation, but we are passionate about animals in our county who have a horrible, horrible, inhumane life at our shelter. We are asking you to be passionate about that. Go down there, learn about it. Go in there on a cold day, on a hot-as-heck day. Go in there on a Friday when they're cleaning out the kennels and they have to euthanize an entire kennel of 20 dogs. You know, find out. Be passionate about what we, about what our interest is. Find the money to help us build a new shelter. I know we have a bond that we have not, that we have acquired, that we could possibly come up with the funds for. You know, you guys have, everybody has their own passion.
All right, I want you, I want you-
But it seems like people on the board are not-
Put your hand right there. Put your hand right there. All right, you feel the pulse?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm passionate.
I can take your pulse.
All right, now, I care. I know you can. I care about the quality, I'm passionate, and I care very deeply about the quality of life of this county. Okay? And quality of life is a broad thing. And yes, I care about transportation. And yes, I care about libraries and parks and street scape improvements, and I care about, you know, everything we do because when people move into community, that's what they care about. If that's what we do, we deliver quality of life. And I understand that animal services is a part of it. So somehow I've, you know, led you to believe that I don't care about it. I don't know what point you got here today, but, you know, I spent all day, most of my day yesterday, about 80% of my day addressing animal services. And I spent time Friday, and somebody called Nina Hall out, but I'm going to let you all know, where's Nina? Okay? Where, Nina left? Where is she? All right, I don't see her for some, she's hiding. How many animal services issues do we, have we been dealing with over the last 60 days? I mean, not that you know the answer, but they've been constant. And so what I'm, what I'm, excuse, okay, so, yeah, we're hearing you, and that's why I commissioned a task force, and that's why I've met with the director of the task force, and that's why I'm meeting with the entire task force, not because anybody asked me to. And that's why we're being very deliberate and thoughtful about how we address a serious problem, but also how we overcome some of the hurdles. We are looking at how we're going to finance it. We think we've come up with a method to do that. We're looking at available land because we may not be able to do, could just go out and purchase a facility. And we're looking at actually getting something meaningful done over the course of the next year. In other words, I don't want to just have a long-term plan that nobody sees the results. You've got to be able to see results in order to get to the next stage. And so, yeah, we're very serious about this issue. Okay? And I know you're very serious about this issue. I know it because you come to every one of my meetings. You've not missed a town hall meeting, and you must know more about this county than you ever knew. And we're getting your emails, and as I told you, when I started tonight, I think I gave you the first question, but I said, "I know it won't be the last question." So, no, we're very serious about it, and we're moving the issue forward. Erica, who's next? Yes, sir. My turn?
Yes, sir, and then I'll go back over here.
We live in Tucker. We have a great library, but you can't get there safely. We live off Old Norcross. Our sidewalks, part of this, $6 billion, because we have people with baby carriages, people in wheelchairs on Old Norcross. Have you ever driven that street? It's not fun.
Yeah.
Are they on the list at all?
Yeah, they are on the list. Initially, we were funding sidewalks over the last 10 years, a number of years when I was a county commissioner. We have a homestead option sales tax, which is a penny sales tax. As the recession hit, people started spending less. People are starting to spend more now, and we had less money for sidewalk improvements. But we have an opportunity as we begin to slowly return from this recession. It's not a quick recovery, it's a slow recovery, and it's an unstable recovery. You know, one day, you know, one indicator looks good, and then gas prices go up, and then employment falls, and then, you know, housing drops. I mean, you know, we haven't quite stabilized yet, but hopefully, as we begin to go through this recovery and people start spending more, we'll have money available from the penny that, 20% of a penny that we call HOST, a homestead option sales tax, goes towards infrastructure improvements. And every year, our administration puts forward a package of infrastructure improvements, and we give them to the Board of Commissioners, and then they take a vote. And typically, in good times, that includes sidewalk improvements. Okay? And as part of the transportation referendum, it includes, what do they call it, life, I mean, the sidewalk improvements and the roadway improvements are a part of it as well, quality of life improvements, yeah, are a part of the local match. But I wanted people to know that in DeKalb County, we have made a sound investment in transit, and we made a decision that the overwhelmingly bulk of our dollars over the next 10 years from that added penny would go towards continuing to invest and expand our transit system. Okay? Thank you, sir. Let's see, have I called on you yet? Okay, all right, your turn.
First, I apologize for interrupting you.
No, I apologize to you, but we're good. We're friends.
Turn around is fair play, so you can interrupt me.
No, I won't do that.
I've been taking some notes during the meeting, so I'll try and keep this brief, but I have a few things to mention. Regarding the 10 positions that you want to add to the animal control sector or the shelter, is there a way of, and I don't know whether it'd be you or somebody else, vetting them in order to make sure that they're people who care about animals and their welfare? Because I have to say, I'm a little alarmed that Mrs. Mooneyham, is that right? You've evidently been at the shelter every day, and yet you didn't report yourself on the horrible situation and the need for the air conditioning and the need for the venting and so forth, so-
That's not true. I mean, the, I want to be-
I'm just going based on what you said, which was that you've been there every day.
No, no, I said it came from the task force because we asked them to identify, I think she, she has several parts of her question. The task force identified issues, but understand, we have departments that are asking for the resources that they need each and every day. And it's tough with these, you know, public, because they're really public servants who've dedicated their careers to doing this, and with, sometimes with not a whole lot of thanks that comes along with it. So they're asking us each and every day, "I need more money, I need more money." And then it's those bad guys in finance who cut their budgets. But seriously, I mean, it's just been difficult making some of the decisions we've had to make. So I didn't mean to in any way indicate that she hasn't been an advocate for animal services. She has very much been an advocate for animal services. It's just that some of the things that she has asked for are now being undergirded with citizen input, and that's a good thing.
Okay. You had mentioned as one of the possibilities of helping the situation is sending out animals to other shelters, and I just wanted to bring up that that may not work well because Georgia has the largest homeless animal population in the United States evidently, and all of the shelters are having-
I think we said off-site adoptions.
Off-site adoption.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I'm wrong twice in a row. Let's see if I can get something right.
You're good because it's given me, given me an opportunity to correct a few things. I'll come back there next.
As far as the cost of building a new facility, I just wanted to say that all the people here and all the people who signed the petition would all be more than willing to help volunteer setting it up if that would help with the cost.
Get me that petition fast, okay? Okay.
And finally, I wanted to say, as, it's great hearing all these things that hopefully you and others will be able to do. If you want to get all of us off your back, if you can make, publicize what's being done on a regular basis so that we're able to see that indeed what we're asking for is indeed happening, and then we won't have to show up all the time in red and disturb your tunnels.
We want government to be user-friendly, and I think that's right. We should publish, Mr. Public Safety Director, I think we should publish the progress. We probably should publish the report. We, we want it presented to the Board of Commissioners before, but it is available to anybody who wants it. It's public information. And we should publish our plan for moving forward, our action plan. And understand, I don't consider you on my back, I consider you on my side. And I say that because there's some things that we ought to be doing as county government, and just because I'm CEO, I can't make it happen. I've got to have a citizen engagement and a citizen push behind it. So when I stand up and say, go before the Board of Commissioners and say, "We need funding allocated this way as opposed to that way, and this is how we set priorities," and they know that I'm representing a constituency group, that's how we bring about action. So I think this is great. I applaud your input. I think we need to make government as user-friendly, like I said, so you don't have to come to these meetings, but I actually like having you come to these meetings because it helps me move things along that I fully support. Okay? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Cynthia Williams.
I'm the CEO, founder of Love From Afar and Parents Against Distracted Driving, and my son was killed from texting and driving in 2006. Since then, I have sent several emails, I've requested several appearances from your office and several entities of the county. I get responses from DeKalb County Fire and Rescue, they help. I am a pride instructor for the governor's, for the Governor's Office of Highway Safety, but I'm trying to just understand, can you put something in the budget, or what's your thoughts on distracted driving, even though this county has removed driver's ed from the schools, but now it's the number-one death of our youth around the country? What are we going to do?
Yeah, we do have legislation, which I very much supported and voted for when I was a county commissioner, that I believe makes it a crime if you have an accident and that you cause as a result of texting. And we have signs that we put up that have said, you know, be careful while using cellphones in DeKalb County. You may have seen some of that. Now, I'm not saying that goes far enough, but, Mr. Director, again, I want you and the chief to get her information, and let's talk about how we can work together.
And if you could, on April 7th, I have put together my own DeKalb County-wide safety day. I'm going to do a mock contract, a mock trial. Don't put them out there, you're blocking the security yourself. I'd love to have your presence.
Give her the mic so she doesn't have to yell at somebody.
I've kind of just taken the ownership of myself. So April 7th, I'm going to put together a county-wide event. I've included the Fire and Rescue, Sheriff's Department, and I'll just take it on myself. I'll just go around and do it, but I need help. I mean, to be honest with you.
First of all, you know, some of the best things we do, I mean, look at the group here today. It starts with one person, and I think we can build on that. It sounds like the sheriff you said and the fire rescue, the fire chief is here, Chief Eddie O'Brien. So it sounds like the county is already engaged. April is National County Government Month, and the theme is Healthy Counties, Healthy Families. This is a part of that theme, as I see it. And if you've already got a couple of our departments engaged in that effort, that's, we may be able to promote that as part of National County Government Month. And so I want to make sure that, who's going to get, what is your name again, please?
My name is Cynthia Williams. I have a card, whoever needs to get it.
But I don't want somebody, I want somebody to get your information and contact you. I've always, I'm always emphasizing to my folks, don't just give her a card, but get Ms. Williams' information, and let's follow up with her and talk about how we can help her event. Okay, I've got, yes, thank you. I'm going to give you the, who do I get? He gets the last, okay. Am I picking them or you picking them, Gabriel?
We came in together, so we'll go together.
All right, I'm going to let you all get the last question, and then, like I said, I will be around.
I've lived here for 38 years. I love the county, don't plan to move, but I have some passionate things as well. First, I'd like to see pit bulls outlawed. That's just number one. Well, that's what I want. You want what you want, I want what I want. Secondly, these are quick, Mr. Burrow.
Okay.
I play golf at Sugar Creek. The fairways are not very good at all. Mystery Valley, our other golf course, I play there as well, they're putting sod in the tree lines. We can't get sod in the fairway, fairways at Sugar Creek. And thirdly, and I'll be done, I visit a great many of the libraries, and what I see is that we effectively have internet cafes. People don't read books, they're hooked on the internet terminal, so-
Yeah, I don't know what I can do about that last thing. That's, that's the way of the world, okay? I've heard you loud and clear, and we're going to work towards making sure you get good customer service, okay? I want to thank you all for being here, time-
Excuse me, Commissioner, I'm sorry. One minute before you go, because I-
I thought you all were together.
No, no, no. I didn't get to express my thought, but I wanted to just piggyback off of what he said with the pit bulls. In my subdivision, which is adjacent to the Kelly Lake Elementary School, we have a pack of feral pit bulls that are living in the woods.
Okay, okay, hold on one second. This is all I was going to say tonight, because I promised everybody at the beginning, if you were at the beginning, that we would start on time, we end on time, and I want to hold true to that. I'm not leaving. I'm going to be here till about 9 o'clock. So I'll be more than happy to take down your information and to get any individual concerns or any-
Well, actually, I wanted to express it in front of this entire town hall because not, not just, I'm sorry.
Ma'am, 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 I understand that.
Commissioner Ellis, I would just like to be able to express myself since I've been